Good evening, the date is March 1st, 2021. The time is now 7:00 PM. I call to order a public hearing for ordinance 1049 concerning amendment of city zoning code 205-9. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Havity Grace adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11 E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havity Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending city zoning code 205-9 to establish maximum setbacks in the National Register Historic District and prohibit front loaded garages on certain streets. At this time, is anyone in the audience here this evening to speak on this ordinance for public hearing? Good evening, sir, and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Good evening, everyone. My name is James Miller. I live at 320 Lewis Street, which is in the Hysterics District down by the hospital. The proposed amendment to the zoning sounds like a good plan, but if you read into the rest of the ordinances that it affects, it's not going far enough, and it's creating other problems, specifically off-street parking requirements. By moving the houses forward, you take up the driveway space. Everybody's still required to have off-street parking except for the parking exempt district, which is between Borben Street and Otigo Street and Union Avenue and the water. That's one of the issues. The other issue is someone wants to build a house with a front porch. They're right up on the property line, so they either build a three-foot wide porch, or they have to come to planning commission and the Board of Appeals for variance and cost them another $600 or $700 to get that hearing. I think the right thing to do is send us back to the committee and have some open discussions and go and look at what it affects across the board. In saying that, reading the current city ordinance and the code, there's a lot of stuff that is out of date. There's state laws that are reflected in there, like 66B, which has been changed to the land use plan. And so there's a reference to, you have to follow 66B, which doesn't exist anymore. So there's a lot of things and a lot of steps that need to be taken care of before you start passing ordinances like this. That's all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on ordinance 1049? Okay. Any comments from the council on ordinance 1049? Okay, without any further comment, I now declare public hearing on ordinance 1049 to be closed. The time is now 7:04. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the time is now 7:04. I call to order a meeting of the Havity Grace Mayor and City Council. Date is March 1st, 2021. Council, I'll do the roll call. Council President Glenn?
Here.
Councilmember Robertson?
Here.
Councilmember Zinner?
Here.
Councilmember Boyer?
Here.
Councilmember Ringsacker?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Thank you very much, council. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and Opening Prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty, just as is for all. I could kindly ask everybody to remain standing. It gives me great pleasure to call forward Pastor James Snodgrass of St. John Episcopal Church. It is so nice to have you here this evening.
Thank you.
First live blessing we've had since November, so...
Seriously?
Oh, yes.
Wow.
We've been reading people's prayers into the record, so it's nice to have an official person do it for us now.
We haven't had in-person worship for two or three months. It's rough.
Well, it's wonderful to have you here, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, let's take a moment in silence and remember those who have suffered, those who are suffering, and those who have died today of the coronavirus, Lord, in your mercy, hear our prayer. Yesterday, the last day of February marked the conclusion of Black History Month. A brief history of this national observance appeared in the newspaper, charting its evolution from a one-day to one-week to one-month observance. We give thanks to God for those who have championed the observance of Black History Month, including Havity Grace's own Kamee Callaway Murphy, who for over eight years has organized an annual observance in our city and received the governor of Maryland's Harriet Tubman Lifetime Achievement Award. A few highlights of this observance. On the 14th of February 1897, at the initiative of Mary Church Tyrell, a half-day was set aside in Washington DC quote "colored schools" to celebrate the birthday of Friedrich Douglas, the great civil rights advocate and native son of Maryland. Students learned of his life, writings, and speeches. In February 1926, honoring the twin February birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglas, Dr. Carter Woodson established Negro History Week in the month of February as quote "a way to expand the celebration of these two great men and encourage Americans to study the little-known history of an entire people." In 1969, in February, students and faculty at Kent State University celebrated the first Black History Month observance. And in February 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial celebration, and with the strong encouragement of several African-American leaders, President Gerald Ford established the National Observance of Black History Month, stating quote "In celebrating Black History Month, we take some satisfaction from the recent progress in the realization of the ideal envisioned by our nation's founders and to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history." In the words of the great spiritual leader and author Reverend Howard Thurman, let us pray. Our Father, we turn to thee in the quietness of prayer. It is but natural that we expose to thee the things in us that seem most worthy and good, and that we may delight your spirit and bring joy to your heart. The unworthy and the ugly things in us, we almost instinctively seek to hide and cover up, that we may seem pleasing in your sight. But deep within us, we know this is not enough. We know that somehow we must be totally exposed to thee, holding back nothing, nor seeking refuge behind some protective screen. Teach us to know that your love is so whole and so healing that nothing less than all of us can rise to meet your all-encompassing care. Teach us to share with you the good and the bad in us, the ugly and the beautiful, the successes and the failures, all, everything, complete in every part. With penitence for fumblings, failures, ignorances, and sin, and with thanksgiving for directness, successes, knowledge, and rightness, we lay bare all that we are to your love and your understanding. O God, our Father, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Father Snodgrass, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're going to go to the item number five on the agenda, approval of minutes. This is the city council meeting minutes of February 16th, 2021. Council, I have a motion?
No move.
I have motion by Councilmember Zinner, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. Question or comments on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. City council minutes of February 16th, 2021 are approved, 6-0 in affirmative. Item number six, comments from citizens on agenda items. This is the part of this evening's agenda. If you wish to speak on an item that is on the agenda, you'll be recognized at this moment. If you're here this evening to speak on any other matter of city business, we have a section towards the end of the agenda called Comments from Citizens. So I do have one, before I call on the audience at large, I'll call on anyone who prefilled out a paper. I do have one prefilled out paper, and that's Mr. Charlie Mike. Good evening, sir. Welcome to the council meeting. I have your name and address for the record, please.
Charlie. Charles A. Mike, 1413 Superior Street, Havity Grace.
Welcome.
Thank you. On your proposed budget amendment tonight, my wife and I are opposed to that budget amendment for Susquehanna Hose Company for purchasing this $30,000, $100 underwater tool. We feel the city supports the fire department very generously every year. Just proof of that is that beautiful $600,000 boat that sits down at the marina. And we also, my family and I, we also support them with our yearly donations, buying their sandwiches or chicken dinners when you have the sale, and raffle tickets, although I won't be buying an AR-15 raffle ticket. But, you know, they are supported very well by the city here. And if they really think they need this tool, I think they need to work it out of their own budget instead of coming to the city for more money. You know, the amount you give them now is very, as I said before, is very generous. I've also gone ahead and, I know a lot of the, I'm friends with very many of the Hose Company members and acquaintances with others, and I've gone ahead and talked to quite a few of them about this, and not one of them knew anything about it. And one of them that has a good bit of experience in the water rescue and dive team wasn't really sure of it. I just don't think, you know, if they feel that they have this need for this, they should work to have their budget. That $30,100 could, if it's coming out of the marina surplus fund, I mean, that could be used on a number of different areas down there that are needed. You know, you're going to be needing the new fuel tanks, you know, dock repairs, upgraded restrooms. I'd really like to see investigation into a halfway decent floating pier downtown that would generate so much business downtown with transient boats, because transient boats just aren't going to come to Havity Grace anymore and dock down to the city yacht basin and walk downtown, but that's a different subject. But there are, again, there are plenty of other areas that that money could be used, so I think you really need to take a strong look on that before you just turn over that money to the Hose Company. I do support the Hose Company very well. I know they do a great job. I'm not disparaging them in any way, except that this money should stay where it's at. And if I can also make another comment on a different subject, it's not particularly on the agenda, but it's on the minutes of the agenda, so your last meeting, this is directed to Mr. Martin, Councilman Martin, on the water and sewer report. I read the report, very fine report. I was a little disappointed to see that you had a recommendation there for water rate increases possibly coming up. Again, I just don't think that's necessary. The reason you gave in there was employees and chemicals, and chemical increases. Well, first of all, according to your budget, and ever Mr. DeHordy gives a report on a budget, everything in Fund 9 seems to be fine, coming along pretty good. And looking at your budget, your employee expenses were pretty steady going across. Matter of fact, for two years, they were going down, and the chemical expenses have been steady going across. So I don't think those two reasons should be for any increase. And if you do feel that you have to increase that fund, I would highly recommend that it would only be the water distribution only, not on the sewer collection. You know, the sewer collection fund is so high, it's 930, and that is so much above anybody else in this area. And increasing that just really raises the bill on a family. I mean, we're a family of two, we're paying $300 a quarter, and we watch our water very closely, and every other week I check my meter to make sure it's not leaking somewhere. And I just think, you know, we really, with the bond issue went through last year, that was supposed to take some of the pressure off, you know, the water fund. And I think...
Well, just want to let you know, Mr. Mike, it's a recommendation only, and...
I understand that.
The budget I will be handing council sometime in April will not have a rate increase in it. We will not be raising rates. Just want to let you know that.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good evening. Anyone on council wishes to speak on an agenda item? Mr. Seipel, do we have any comments from citizens that were sent to us electronically?
No, sir, no comments for agenda items.
Okay, any comments from council? Okay. We're going to go to item number seven, appointments. This evening, there are no appointments. Item number eight, recognitions. This evening, there are no recognitions. Item number nine, proclamations. This evening, there are no proclamations. Item number 10, presentations. There are no presentations. Item 11, resolutions. There are no resolutions this evening. Item 12, ordinances. There are no laws to pass. And number 13, old business. We have no old business, which takes us to new business. Like how this just keeps moving on like this? Okay. All right. So with new business, we have a budget amendment 2021-09, Slip Tax User Fund for Susquehanna Hose Company, Councilmember Robertson.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve budget amendment 2021-09.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Martin. Questions or comments on the budget amendment? Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do want to just take a second to talk about it a little bit. So the Susquehanna Hose Company, you know, did submit a request for this underwater cutter and underwater spreader, and the funding for this would come from Fund Number 7, which is slip user fees. That's the revenue source, and that is a fee that each slip in the city of Havity Grace has to pay with the specific purpose of going back to water safety. So anything that improves water safety or emergency uses, i.e. the Susquehanna Hose Company, would fall under that specific use. So it's not coming out of the general fund. We couldn't just take that money and redo the bathrooms. That would have to come out of Fund 10 or the general fund, and there would be some kind of reimbursement. But because this is specific for the purpose of so far, the uses for Susquehanna Hose Company or for fire prevention at the slips and at the docks, that's why I'm in favor of this amendment personally. And as an aside, I would like to mention that, you know, this past year has been pretty tough on volunteer organizations. I do recognize that we've already approved an additional amount for the Susquehanna Hose Company, but I would like to remind folks that, you know, most volunteer organizations haven't had the opportunity to fundraise, and while some organizations, like the Arts Collective or something, they're also not performing as much, so they're really not spending as much money into a deficit, or, you know, their work really isn't being inhibited by the amount of money that they're raising right now. Susquehanna Hose Company hasn't stopped working, so I'm in favor of supporting them if and when we can, and in this particular circumstance, I think it's a win because that money is specifically for water emergencies. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. And, you know, Councilmember Martin?
Mr. Mayor, council, citizens, aye to him in support of this amendment and moving the money. If that tool helps save one life in its entire usage, the cost is worth the expense, and it's coming from the boaters, who, that's what that fee was for. So, you know, understand that it may never have to be used, and if it's not, it's like a spare tire in your car. I hope you never need it, but when you do, you're going to want to have it. So this tool, I hope it's never needed, but if it does help to save one life, that cost is well worth it. That's my comments for tonight on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Any other further questions or comments? Hey, council, I'm going to get a roll call vote on this, if you don't mind. Councilmember Zinner?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ringsacker?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Council President Glenn?
Yes.
A roll call vote of 6-0 in the affirmative. Budget amendment 2021-09 is approved and adopted by council. Councilmember Robertson, would you mind just reading the quick account numbers into the record, please?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. And I think I mentioned the wrong funding source for, for anything that has to be done at the Marina, the Marina Fund, I believe it's Fund 8, it's not Fund 10. I said Fund 10, but...
I know what you meant.
I mean Fund 8.
Fund 8.
We got one through, like, 11 now, I think, so, excuse me, guys. All right, Mr. Mayor, in the from column, account number 01-0001-49-00, fund transfers, slip users, fund 7, $30,100. In the to column, account number 01-1131-6501, additional Susquehanna Hose Company contributions,
Mr. DeHordy, are all the numbers matching up?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. DeHordy. Councilmember Robertson, thanks for reading the numbers into the record. Item B, Mr. Seipel.
Well, good evening, Mayor, and good evening, council. I have two special events for your consideration for this evening. The first is a perennial event for us, it's the Havity Grace Farmers Market. This event is sponsored by the Community Projects of Havity Grace. This is a weekly event occurring every Saturday. They plan to hold the event at our current location, which is the community pavilion and the parking area at Frank J. Hutchins Memorial Park. If you could envision, the tent would be up, and the entire parking area would be used for the farmers market to continue to facilitate social distancing and other COVID practices that we had in this past year. They would begin on May 1st and continue until December 18th. Again, that is one modification in previous years, they want to extend their market about four additional weeks. That's kind of exciting for maybe some Christmas purchases. I know, we don't talk about Christmas, we're still getting out of winter, but bear with me, nothing like planning ahead. They wish to begin setup at 7:30 AM. The market would operate from 8:30 AM until noon, would break down occurring immediately thereafter. The merchants would be out by 1:00. So the market wants to continue on the 8:30 early start. Again, that's been a very positive, we've had a lot of positive feedback from vendors and, more importantly, from participants. So I'm kind of excited for that. The farmers request three afford trash receptacles and, of course, two recycling containers. Alcohol is sold at the market and given away in the form of samples, very small samples. However, no alcohol is being served. They anticipate attendance to be 500 to 600 weekly patrons. This, as you know, is a rain or shine series event. Their COVID plan is in keeping with the CDC guidelines, as we saw practiced last year, with social distancing, wearing masks, hand sanitizers at each vendor's table. They chalk every six feet out in front of their tables to promote social distancing, and of course, they have appropriate signage as you enter the market area. They also encourage pre-order and pre-pay, which certainly saves people time, and knowing that their order will be complete, especially if you're trying to get bread. Public works expense is $7,097.50. There is no police expense, as they will oversee with normal patrols. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Seipel. Council, I have a motion to approve this year's farmers market.
So moved.
Heard the council president and seconded by Councilmember Ringsacker. Motion by the council president, seconded by Councilmember Ringsacker. Questions or comments on the farmers market? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Farmers Market, every Saturday from May 1st to December 18th, 2021, 8:30 AM to 12:00 PM at Hutchins Park, is approved by council, 6-0 in the affirmative. Next event, Mr. Seipel.
The second event this evening for your consideration is the Women's Suffragist Event. This event is sponsored by the city of Havity Grace. It's a one-day event originating at the Cultural Arts Center at the Opera House and culminating at Millard E. Tiding's Memorial Park, more specifically, the gazebo at Millard E. Tiding's Memorial Park. The date for this event is Saturday, March 27th. So to give you a brief scenario, a synopsis of what's going on, at 10:00 AM, participants will meet at the Cultural Center at the Opera House. At noon, they begin a march down Union Avenue towards Tiding's Park. After arriving at the park, event organizers will have a presentation made from the park gazebo at 1:00. This is in keeping in similar fashion to commemorate the speech, the march, and speeches given by women suffragists like Elizabeth Forbes in 1915. A plaque will then be unveiled, marking the spot and time of this historic event. The event will end at 2:30, with cleanup beginning immediately following its conclusion. The sponsors are requesting traffic control to permit their participants to have a safe march from the Opera House to the park. PD will be providing escort service via a rolling roadblock type fashion. Additionally, the city will be providing chairs and a sound system, as well as installation of the plaque. There will be some reserved parking areas on Commerce Street to ensure guest speakers and attendees with mobility constraints have easy access to the gazebo. There is no rain date. Should it be deemed inhospitable to host the march and speakers at the gazebo, the event will move indoors to the Opera House. The anticipated attendance is 200. If we move inside to the Opera House, we understand that that attendance number will have to be reduced, in keeping in CDC guidelines and state mandates on COVID practice. Public work expense is... Public work expense is, costs are $322.50. Expenses for PD is $339. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seipold. Council, do I have a motion to approve the Women's Suffragists Event for March 27?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Boyer, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. Questions or comments on the event? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The Women's Suffragists Event and Dedication, March 27, 2021, at Tiding's Park, is approved, six-zero and affirmative. Thank you very much, Council. Thank you, Mr. Seipold. And we're gonna go to Director's Report, item number 15. Mr. Seipold, we're gonna come right back to you. Director Administration.
Thanks so much, Mayor, and good evening, Council, and again, citizens. It's beginning to feel a little bit more like normal, as we start to see special events and meeting announcements coming forth. So, you know, Puxitoni Phil may have seen his shadow, and winter may seem like six more weeks, but I think in the hearts of people in Havity Grace, spring is just around the corner. On Friday, March 12th, the Havity Grace Arts Collective presents Iona. It's an evening of Celtic song and dance. Iona's music is a unique acoustic wave of traditional music of Scotland, Ireland, Wales, Cornwall, Brittany, otherwise known as France, the Olive Man, and Galicia, which was Spain, as well as their transplants in America. Blending songs, dance, tunes into a rich and stunning tapestry, their style is outstanding in an arena where these traditions seldom intertwine. The showtime is at 7 p.m., and tickets can be purchased online at their website, hdgoperhouse.org. On Saturday, March 13th, take a guided nature-history walk on the North Park Trail. It is an easy walk of 1 1/2 miles and 90 minutes on the North Park. This pleasant and enlightening trail walk is free to the public and will occur rain or shine. Sturdy footwear is recommended. The trail walk will disembark from the lockhouse promptly at 10 a.m. For those new to the city or to the area, the lockhouse is located at 817 Canestio Street in Havity Grace. The Havity Grace Alliance invites everyone to join them and experience the charm of Havity Grace in all her winter splendor by attending their annual Ice Festival, Fairy Tales and Fantasy, on Saturday, March 13th, from 3 to 8, and Sunday, March 14th, from 12 to 4. It's a festival of all things fanciful and fantastical in beautiful downtown Havity Grace. There will be lots of ice sculptures, a chili cook-off, live radio broadcasts, photo ops, galore, kids' stations, games, contests, fire pits, ice carving demonstrations, a live mini unicorn, I can't wait to ride that, food trucks, costume cater characters, a hot toddy bar, artisans, bands, restaurant specials, and store promotions. Social distancing and wearing a mask are required practices for attending this event. Again, the times are Saturday, March 13th, from 3 to 8, and Sunday, March 14th, from noon until 4. This is a free outdoor event. And then on Sunday, March 14th, daylight saving times begins, woo-hoo! Don't forget to move your clocks forward. Remember to spring forward. And if you missed any of the information I just spoke of, and for a complete calendar of events of our city and participating venues, please visit our websites at explorehavitygrace.com, hdgoperhouse.org, and of course, havitygracemd.gov. And that will conclude my rantings for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Seipold. Appreciate the updates. We're gonna call Mr. Shane Grimm, our Director of Planning. Good evening, Mr. Grimm. It's good to see you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's always tough to follow Mr. Seipold's exciting comments, so I'll do the best I can. But first, I want to let you know, I wanted to circle around with you all and let you know that the Planning Commission did meet last week, on Monday, to discuss Bully Rock Parcel F. And as you know, we had two meetings on the project, because there were some questions, some outstanding questions that were left to be answered. And after lots of discussion, we did answer all those questions, and the plan was approved for 102 single-family dwellings on Parcel F. And I just wanted to thank the citizens of Bully Rock. They were all very respectful and sent very good questions. And in fact, there was three or four individuals who had some very pointed questions that led us in different directions to answer those questions. So I really give kudos to them for being engaged in a public process and being a part of that, and asking very good questions. And the meeting went really well. And again, thanks to, I know I probably say it every time, but thanks to Volney, Ford, and Company for really handling themselves very well in the virtual format. I know all are excited to return to in-person meetings. And we will have our first in-person meeting in some time, on March 22nd, when we will review Parcel K in Bully Rock. And Parcel K was originally intended to be condominiums, but at this time, they're proposing 49 townhouse units that I would assume would look similar to those across the street from that parcel. So lots of stuff going on in Bully Rock, and I also anticipate several more parcels on the resident side that will be brought before the Planning Commission in the next couple of weeks. So we'll be very busy on that front. Also, I wanted to let you know, recently, we've been working with Harford County and Aberdeen and the Baltimore Metropolitan Commission on a project to do a study, which is essentially a multimodal and land use study of the Route 40 corridor. And Diane Clare is managing that project, and I'm assisting her with that as well. But she put together a little something that I just wanted to read briefly, just to kind of give you an idea what's occurring with that. So the Baltimore Metropolitan Council for the Fiscal Year 2223 Budget and Work Plan, otherwise known as Unified Planning Work Program, or UPWP, has been released for public comment and can be viewed on their website. This work program includes a multimodal transportation study entitled U.S. 40 Land Use and Transportation Study, which can be seen in Appendix B Focus Areas, pages 105 and 106 of the document. The goal of this study is to look long-range, to reimagine U.S. 40 as a corridor that supports mixed-use development with transit and planned bike improvements spanning multiple jurisdictions. It includes a description of the project, its anticipated cost, as well as noting the planned participants, such as the City of Aberdeen and Havity Grace, Harford County, MDOT, and advisory participants, like the Lower Susquehanna Heritage Greenway, East Coast Greenway, Will Mapco, and Baltimore County for long-range corridor planning. The study has come out of a year-long coordination effort with Harford County Department of Planning and Zoning and the BMC. It's very appropriate that this high-level study is performed under the BMC for future implementation and long-term capital funding. This is not a five-year plan. It is more like a 30-year plan, and you have to be in it for the long haul. Unified Planning Work Program is a two-year work program for transportation planning in the Baltimore Metropolitan Region, which includes Baltimore City and Baltimore, Carroll Howard, Anna Rundle, Queen Anne's, and Harford Counties and their municipalities. This is a federal requirement that details projects, studies, and other activities to be completed by the BRTP members and staff of the Baltimore Metropolitan Council. BRTP is the Baltimore Regional Transportation Board. The BMC staff works for this board for long-term regional transportation planning. Public comments or letters of support for this project are due by Thursday, March 11th, at comments@baltimore, or, I'm sorry, comments@baltometro.org. And so if anybody's interested in going there and supporting our planning efforts, that would be greatly appreciated. I do want to say, as part of this project, it's taking a look at how mixed-use development can help to redevelop and revitalize a corridor, but we're already ahead of the curve there, because we did that. And we're seeing the fruits of our labor on that, with the Blenheim Run Project, which is nearing the start of that project. And we're very excited to have that with the first phase of 51 units. So lots of stuff going on in planning world. This, what I just spoke about dovetails nicely with our efforts on the Comprehensive Plan Update, which Diane Clare is also managing. And she's well underway in starting to prepare that document. And we're looking forward to getting your input on that, as well as the Planning Commission and other stakeholders in the community. And I apologize for not being as exciting, Mr. Seipold, but thank you again for allowing me to give my comments.
Not a problem, Mr. Grimm. Just as important. Any questions for Mr. Grimm?
Good.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the update. All good stuff happening.
Sure.
Item C, Ms. Erica Quiz and Mary Sturgill, who's our Director of Economic Development, isn't able to be here this evening, but she does have a prepared statement that Mr. Seipold will read into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Erica couldn't be here tonight, but she is still working very diligently. And so she's here in spirit. The anticipated Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development Main Street funds for the State Economic Recovery Initiative, otherwise known as Siri, have been awarded to the Havity Grace Alliance. And Julie Runkie, as Main Street Coordinator, has begun distribution of simplified grant request forms to all eligible businesses in the state-designated Havity Grace Main Street District. Several of these simplified forms have already been completed and returned to the Alliance. In addition, she is working on a gift card promotional program as well, and we can expect to see a rollout of that in the coming weeks. Additionally, they continue to work with multiple parties interested in relocating their businesses to Havity Grace, or expanding here, or starting a business in Havity Grace, from a tourism, let's see, from a tourism boating concept business to restaurateurs, tech and defense-oriented offices, to manufacturers and a distributing facility, as well as mom-and-pop-style shops making boutique products. Those who may have available commercial or industrial space, or office space available within the City of Havity Grace city limits, are encouraged to contact the Office of Economic Development, so we can update available listings due to the recent influx of requests. So Havity Grace continues to be a hotspot, and people are coming, not just residences, but businesses alike. And that's all I have on the economic front this evening.
That was good news. Thank you very much for sharing, Mr. Seipold. And I appreciate Ms. Sturgill for getting that together for us. Thank you. We're gonna call forward our Director of Finance, Mr. George DeHorty. How are you doing this evening, sir?
Doing well, Mr. Mayor. Council, good evening. Citizens, I'm glad to be back in a more populous venue.
Absolutely.
It feels a little more like home now. Okay, the current, first, thank you for the passage of the budget amendment. I'm sure it'll, I know the Hose Company was anxious to hear the results of that, and I know it's going to be, it was done for the right reasons, and it's a good call. So thank you for that. The general fund, the general fund is currently sitting at just over $5.7 million, which is $1.8 million ahead of our budget schedule. Of course, we started the year at $1.9 million ahead of schedule, as I've reported every period, and that doesn't change. Our salaries are running at $840,000 below budget. Most of that is, again, as I've said several times, we're being very careful, and I think the word is deliberate in our rehiring process. And we're just, because of the reduced schedule of activity so far with the COVID, we've just been able to work with less, and we're realizing those savings. Unfortunately, income tax receipts are running about $625,000 behind schedule. But our real property is sitting at about $118,000 over what our original budget estimates were. Our highway user fees still, we expect it to be behind schedule, and again, that's based on the S.H.A. estimates. Fund 9, the balance sits at just under $290,000 for the year, which is a slight decrease, $19,000 a year to date. That's not unexpected, because the February billing cycle is the smallest of the three cycles. And so we usually take a dip, and then we come back up in the next month. And so I fully expect that the fund will be up for the year when I report again, in April, not next period, but the one after. Our operating profit so far has been $1.8 million. Add to that capital fees we've collected of a little over $1.65 million. And to date, on capital projects and debt service, we've spent $3.5 million. And that rolls to the $19,200 decrease. The Marina Fund sits at just under $1.1 million, and it has increased $270,000 for the year. And as a comparison, last year, the increase as of this date was just under $220,000. So we're running about 50 ahead of schedule. And that's to do with the increased Marina slip fees, and we're starting to see a bump in ramp fees, because we really haven't started the heavy expenditure, because the boating season is just getting ready to begin. But as of right now, we're looking strong. And that's the financial report on the three major funds, sir. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Horty, Council? Councilmember Boyer?
So we are all kind of expecting that the income receipts are most likely going to be down this year. When will we have a better idea of if it is in fact down, or how much down will it be?
Probably not until next year, next fiscal year.
Next fiscal year.
Because it's all dependent, a lot of the corporations and stuff don't pay on April 15th. They have their own years. And so there's enough of that in this town to make a difference.
Okay.
In the city, excuse me, to make a difference. So, I mean, we'll have a sense, but I always leave room for surprises when it comes to income taxes.
So continuing to be cautious?
Absolutely.
The right thing to do. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. DeHorty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening, sir. Next, I'd like to call forward Mr. Tim Whitty, the Director of Public Works for City Havity Grace. Good evening, Mr. Whitty.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Couple things today, this evening. First is that the paving for Phase 4 will be completed starting March 8th, so all the ruts that are and the patching work that's out there now on the roads, we're gonna start repairing that. Hopefully, with the weather stays warm and the temperatures keep rising, contractor plans to start on March 8th. We've met with him, Joe Conway and myself met with him last week. We outlined, BG Needs is usually being very generous with us and helping us with at least 50% of the roads. Several of the roads, they've opted to just, based on just the size of them, that they'd opt to just pave the whole road themselves, which was real nice. And so we've taken some of that money, and obviously, as I said before, we're putting it towards curb repairs. So I know people have been patient, and a little bit with the riding over it and the rough ride. BG Needs, that's Phase 4, is planning on starting that, as I said, March 8th and completing that work. March 5th, this Friday, the bids will be due for the water line to Havity Grace to Aberdeen. We've been answering a couple of questions, so you know, pretty much, we've got about five people bidding on the project. And they've been fluttering us with a few questions. We've been answering those, and it seems like everything's moving forward, and should be able to get that bid in on Friday, and go through them and then award the contract sometime later this month. Bridget Cardy informed Stephanie of a potential grants for work on the lockhouse. And so we're taking her up on it to do, enhance the landscaping. Actually, with the money we're gonna use, try to take down a lot of the woody vegetation that's along the shoreline of the pond, plant back some of the vegetation with native plants along the shoreline, and as well as within different areas of the lockhouse grounds. But the main goal is to try to, the embankment of that pond, kind of make it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing, and put some landscaping in there and kind of dress it up a little bit. So that bid has, that grant application has to be submitted by this Thursday. So Stephanie's working on that one. The Old Bay Lane project, waterline plans are 100% complete. I've written the request for proposal for construction, but I'm holding off. I was gonna combine both the, just to make it a little bit more favorable, try to get a better price and more contractors on the project. I'm lumping the Old Bay Lane waterline with the two waterline projects, the Green and Wilson. And the Green plans, I had to make a slight adjustment, requested a slight adjustment with the alignment. That's being, it was done last, worked on, I sent it to the contractor last week, or the engineer, and she's gonna have that to me this week, and I'll start finishing up the request for proposal and get that advertised. Sewer projects are finishing up. I should have that this week as well, at 100% drawings, to kind of finalize and get that moving towards a request for proposal construction. And then finally, the Marina plans, I'm actually reviewing the specs right now, specifications for the project now. I've reviewed the plans. The plans are ready to go. And I'm going through the specifications this week. I should have that back. And then we'll be getting that out for- this week, I should have that back, and then we'll be getting that out for proposal, for request for proposal for construction as well, for the tank and dispenser replacement and lines, and fuel lines replacement. Any questions?
All good stuff, Mr. Whitty. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Whitty? Okay, well, it's all welcome news, especially the paving, so.
Yes, we're getting that done, so it's, I have to, I really do appreciate, we have a really good working relationship with BG&E, and they have, I can just say, they're very generous in helping us out, so it's been, it's been good.
It is, it's a very good work relationship. Thank you, Mr. Whitty.
All right, thank you.
You betcha. I'd like to call forward the Chief of the Police, Chief Walter. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of things to talk about. First thing, I just want to remind folks again about leaving their valuables in their vehicles. Typically, we see in our city, people that leave valuables in their vehicles overnight and then they get broken into. However, the county is seeing a slight uptick. We haven't fortunately, but the county is seeing a slight uptick of cars that are being broken into while people are in grocery stores, or when they're at a leather clubs, or just out shopping, you know, that type of thing. They leave their purses, or laptops, or that type of thing, and people are actually starting to break into those vehicles. So again, I just want to remind everybody, so we don't see that here in our city, just to, you know, again, put purses in trunks of vehicles, or laptops, or, you know, or just, just don't take them with you if you don't have to. So that's just a reminder in that regard. The other thing I want to talk about just very briefly is the School Resource Officer Program. Mayor, I know that you are familiar with several pieces of legislation down in Annapolis that would actually change the look of the School Resource Officer Program throughout the entire state. I am in opposition to those pieces of legislation because not only will it change us, but it will really have a huge impact on our School Resource Officer Program. We've had our program for about 20 years. I know when I got here, we already had a School Resource Officer Program, we had one School Resource Officer to hit all four, all four schools, and then slowly we started increasing them. And then finally in 2012, unfortunately after the Newtown, Connecticut active shooter, the council members at that time and the mayor at that time made the determination that it was very, very important to them to add School Resource Officers in all four of our schools. So that's what we did, because the one thing that we know is that our schools are very vital to our community. It's a big part of the community of here in Havity Grace. So we wanted to make sure that our school, our schools are as safe as they possibly can be. Now, when School Resource Officer Programs really started, a lot of it dealt with enforcement and safety and security, but over the years, they have actually evolved into much more than that. We are involved with everything with the kids, from mentoring, rapport building, helping them with after-school activities, helping them with studying. Some of the other examples of our School Resource Officers, this is, I guess it's kind of not so great for me, but when, now Sergeant's Pet was Corporal Pets, and he was at the high school, Mr. Reynolds at the time made an announcement that Corporal Pets was going to be promoted to Sergeant Pets, and that he would be transferred out of the high school. And I immediately got a rounding boo, because the kids like, like Dan Pets so much. And then a couple of years after that, I experienced the same thing with Corporal Bert Brown. He got, you know, huge, huge round of applause, and that's tough coming from high school kids, because we all know that have kids, that they're, they're really tough, they're very, very critical. And to see that coming from high school kids says a whole lot about our School Resource Officers personally, as well as our program. And unfortunately, with the way many of these bills are written, it will pretty much eliminate the School Resource Officer Program. The School Resource Officers will not be allowed in the schools unless they're called upon, where they wear their equipment and how they wear it, that's all going to change if in fact they do that. So like I said, over the years, we've built positive relationships, not only with the children, but with the parents, the school administrators. The kids come up to us on First Fridays, they seek us out on First Fridays to say hello to us. That's from the smallest to the ones that are graduating. We get kids that have graduated that see the School Resource Officers, bring their, now, you know, new husband or wife, or that type of thing, just to talk to them to say hello. So those are the kinds of things that we don't want to lose. Out of the School Resource Officer Program, we have everything now from the Explorers, the summer safety camp is huge, we've got a waiting list for kids to go to our summer safety camp. So those are the types of things. It's not just enforcement and safety and security, that's a part of it, but it's not all of it. So I would really encourage people to get in touch with their elected officials, Maryann Lassante, Steve Johnson, Mr. Griffith, Senator Castley, and ask them to oppose, to oppose the bills. Not only are they under like police reform bills, but they're also under education and health bills as well. So I'll get off my soapbox, but this is something that I'm very, very passionate about. I think our School Resource Officers have had a huge impact on our, on our children and on our communities, and I think that's what we want. We want them to have dialogues with school, with police officers, we want them to share their experiences and have police officers truly help them, and we do that. And I would hate to see that changed. I would just hate to see that changed. So I'm sorry, I'll get off my soapbox now, but I felt it had to be said, because I know there's a lot of hearings going on about, about the different bills, so that would be it.
And people should reach out to the Chairman of the Committees.
That's correct.
As well.
That is correct. That is correct. That's really, that is very, very important. I know here in the city of Havity Grace, we've been dealing with a lot of these pieces of legislation since the summertime. I give Adam, our liaison with Annapolis, a lot of credit, he has done a lot of work looking at all of the pieces of legislation, the fiscal impact, Mr. DeHordy's looked at the fiscal impact, a lot, at a lot of these pieces of legislation. But yes, yeah, the chairpeople of those, of those hearings or those committees is equally as important. Yes, ma'am. Yes, Mr. Coleman?
I just want to let you know, I sent an email again today to all those key legislators.
Oh, thank you.
And if anybody wants to know the value of the SRO programs, just go to First Fridays.
Yes.
Because they, those kids flock to those SROs.
Yeah.
In droves, and it's just amazing, and somebody said that, you know, we don't need disciplinarians in schools, and the fact is, they're not disciplinarians.
They're not.
They're mentors.
Yeah, that's not, that's not our job.
They're mentors and they're building this positive relationship that I think this country needs, so that we respect law enforcement, and it's just, it's just amazing, and like you said, the summer camp programs, they're lined up.
Right.
And I was there the night that Dan Pets got told that he was being promoted, and watching those kids, they were devastated.
They were. I did, I was like, I was trying to do the low crawl out of this.
My last message to our legislators was, to do away with the SRO program is an opportunity lost.
It is.
And hopefully they do the right thing, and I got my fingers crossed, and I even sent a note to Dan today, I says, if by some chance you could grab one of those kids that you mentored, you know, take them with you, so have them speak, because I've always said that it's tougher legislators to look a kid in the eye and tell them no.
Yeah, that's it, exactly. You're absolutely right.
But thank you for all you do, for all the SROs, and we got it right.
Yeah, they're phenomenal people.
And unfortunately, hopefully they understand that.
Yeah, we have been, we've been very, very lucky to have really good School Resource Officers. Jared Coleman, I think we spotlighted something that he had done, surprising one of the children at the elementary school with a bicycle, because he knew that was the only way the child could get to school. He had it refurbished, had it there for him.
Remember that.
Bert Brown, a student at the high school didn't have a father to take her to a debutante ball, so he had asked me if that was okay. I said, it's okay with me, is it okay with your wife, is it okay with the young lady's parent, not a mother? It was. He paid his own money to get dancing lessons. He spent his own money for a limousine. I mean, it's, it was, it was wonderful. And then this young lady had a great memory, and so did Bert. So, so yeah, that's how important it is. We're not just, yeah, we're not just the police in the school, we're in the school community, and that's important.
Right.
That's it, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Robertson?
No, I appreciate you bringing that up, Chief. I'm a big fan of the School Resource Officers.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, that's really the core of community policing, you know, that's where it starts. Do you happen to have the bills handy, or the bill numbers? I did talk to Maryann.
1089.
1089 is the one that's being heard tomorrow, but that's under the Health and Education. It's not, you're not going to see it under any kind of like police bill.
Yeah.
It is under like the Health and Education. So it's being attacked by several different, the SRO program is being attacked by several different means.
Yes, when I talked to delegates Lassante and Johnson about it, it seemed like it was more of a state funding.
Correct.
Thing, you know, I didn't realize that they were like disallowing School Resource Officers from even being in the schools.
Yeah, yeah. And we, but for us, I mean, we fund our own SROs.
I thought so.
So, which, which is, which is wonderful, but nonetheless, if they change the state law as to where we can be and that type of thing, that still changes it.
Yeah.
It changes the whole dynamic. Yes, sir. Good question.
Right, so if the state takes away the funding, it doesn't affect us, because we've always paid for our officers in Havity Grace, but if they actually don't allow them at all.
Correct.
That affects us.
Yeah, like, like one of the bills has that they can stay outside, and they can be buzzed in if there's an emergency or that type of thing, if they need to use the restroom, then, then what's, what's the point of the SRO program? It just seems to me that in this day and age, when we want conversation, when we want our children to know about things and to get a different perspective, we're not, we're going to legislate against that? That, to me, kind of seems counterproductive. We want them to see police officers, and we don't want them to be afraid to approach an officer and just have a conversation, not even if they need help. We want them if they need help, but just to have a conversation, so. And we've seen them grow up, and it's been wonderful. It's been absolutely wonderful. We try to recruit a lot of them to go into law enforcement. They all like to go to the fire service. No. But, but yeah, like our school, our, our summer safety camp, we talk them about stewardship, the community, you know, we do everything from the green team, we explain that, you know, the host company, the ambulance corps, so we try to make it so they understand about the community as a whole, so that they know what their responsibility is to our community.
Councilmember Robertson, do you have anything else to say?
No, sir, but I do want to just add, my son loves Officer Adams, so.
Everybody loves Officer Adams. She's awesome.
Councilmember Senator?
Thank you. What I wanted to say was that when I read this, I guess it was several weeks ago, I had also sent off letters, but two years ago, the legislature passed a bill to fund SROs in all of the schools.
In 2018.
Yes, ma'am. Right? As well as behavioral health professionals.
Correct.
And this was after the Parkland shooting. So we seem to react positively in some ways when we hear about these tragedies in the schools, and then it's, it's a 360 degree turnaround to try to pull this money back two years later. And I remember when I heard about the millions of dollars that they had approved to fund both the SROs and the behavioral professionals, behavioral health professionals, I was really excited about that program because I thought it was the best time to really maybe spot some trouble from a mental health perspective, or even a child that has depression, or is unhappy at home, or things like that. So instead of acting out, somebody's there to intercede. So I would really hope that the legislature really rethinks this, goes back to their original plan that they had approved and passed two years ago, and not only fund the SROs, but also the behavioral health professionals, because I just think that this is a poor reaction to maybe some events or whatever that seem to get attention because they're negative, as opposed to all of the positive impact that the SROs have, and I think also behavioral health professionals. And I think those individuals also would really welcome being a part of the team with an SRO to help the children as much as possible.
And that's the key, being a team, because right now, you know, and that's what our nation is calling for, a team effort, and it doesn't seem like, it just seems like some of these pieces of legislation are counterintuitive to that, but, but what you're right, what you said is exactly right. It should be a team effort, so.
Well, Chief, I'm gonna hold you, since you brought it up, I'm gonna keep here one more minute. So yes, 1089. So House Bill 1089 Annapolis, if it passes, it would not allow police officers in our schools with arrest authority. But what I want to do is I want to thank you, because I remember, were you on council when we passed the resolution, 2012?
Yeah, we were at a Christmas event, where we said, we got together, you, me and Randy.
That's right, me, you and Randy, that's right. So, so it was council, President Glenn, myself, and Councilmember Craig, after the Newtown shooting, you know, we went and talked to Mayor Doherty, and, but you had written the book on it, you had this operating procedure.
Correct.
In the event, like, we were to do this with all our schools. I remember, I'll never forget that. You were ready to roll on day one. It wasn't like we had to figure out how we're going about doing this, and so I want to commend you on that. It was a successful program, because immediately we were able to address what we thought was, was a need in our elementary school and our middle school. But I want to say, as a, as a teacher of 22 years, at probably one of the largest middle schools in Hartford County, there's 1,200 kids in Aberdeen Middle School, it was like half that at Havity Grace Middle School. It wasn't till several years later that we received a School Resource Officer in Aberdeen Middle School, when the city of Aberdeen finally allocated one. And you know, again, it's, it's how you write the book, it's the training of the officer, but also it's the, it's the instinct of the chief to put the right person in the right school.
That is key. It's very important.
That's huge.
Yes.
That's huge. And, and, you know, and obviously in our schools, you've always done a good job. In the school I'm in, our SRO officer's been there for five years. I can't tell you what a successful program it is for 1,200 kids, just to, just to fly them, wag them down and say, hey, you know, we're going over, I teach U S S U, of course, but you know, we're talking about the Bill of Rights, and he comes in and talks to the kids about, you know, the Fourth Amendment. Kids love that amendment. Anyways, but to have an officer in your classroom, the kids won't, will never run out of questions for the police. Like, the positive things I've seen from it, and I one time remarked that many, many decades ago, a lot of people thought, you know, how could we ever afford to put nurses in every school? I mean, the idea was a foreign idea, I mean, we'll never be able to do that. Well, in today's age, I often think, well, how can we afford not to have an officer in every school? Because I also remember having a conversation with you, Chief, years ago, when we were justifying funding for all of our schools. So let's say you have 600 kids at Aberdeen Middle, Aberdeen, or, I'm sorry, Havity Grace Middle School. And I said, I said to you, Chief, I said, if we had an event at Tidings Park with 600 people, would you put an officer there? And you said, absolutely, I'd have a couple officers walking through, any event at Tidings Park that has 600 people.
Correct.
And here we have 600 children and 60 adults, completely unguarded, unprotected, and it's not always a shooter, you're aware of that, there's other hazards and harms that can come.
Correct.
In the way of people, so, you know, and, and one of the things I pride myself on as I get older is holding my comments and not saying things until I can try to put myself in other people's shoes and think about other people's perspectives, but I'm just going to go ahead and say it. I don't know what people are thinking when they say an officer in school is a pipeline to jail. I mean, what are they trying to raise their kids to be criminals? I mean, I'm just going to go ahead and say it. Go ahead and quote me, paper. I mean, it's like, I mean, that's what they're calling it, that's their justification, it's a pipeline to prison. Like, why would you say that? I've seen it done so much good to keep kids out of prison, you know, because the officers aren't there to arrest kids, the officers are there to help kids and make them make better decisions, and, you know, to avoid those situations. So again, the city will be testifying in opposition to House Bill 1089 on Wednesday. We're actually going to speak against it, so. But again, I just want to, I'm glad you brought it up, I was going to bring it up in my comments, but, but I really just wanted to thank you, Chief, because, you know, I know you don't like taking credit for things you do, but you were ready to roll on day one eight years ago when we rolled this program out, and it's been very successful, and again, Havity Grace led the way.
They did, and, and I want to use one of Dave Glenn's, excuse me, Councilmember, Council President Glenn's terms, everybody said it was a knee jerk reaction. I took so much, you know, up in Bel Air.
Oh, yeah.
That type of thing, but I'm like, hey, this is what we think is necessary for the city of Havity Grace at this moment, and that's what we're going to do. This is absolutely what we are going to do.
It's funny you bring that up, because there was an individual that said just that, a knee jerk reaction, and what? And what I did was I invited that individual to the summer camp graduation. And when that individual walked in there and he saw the graduation and what those kids did during the summer camp, they were blown away and they looked at me and says, oh, my God, Havergrace got it right, you know? And so you say knee jerk reaction all you want, but when you see the end of what, what we put in place, I mean, you guys nailed it. As a little league coach, you hit a grand slam.
Well, there you go. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate that, folks. Thank you.
Chief, thank you for your time.
No problem, sir.
Have a good evening. We're going to move on to item sixteen, comments from, from the mayor's office. I've got a few things here. I wanted to circle back to, uh, Mr. Witty mentioned a few minutes ago about paving, hopefully should be beginning around March eighth. I want to thank my citizens for their patience. Um, I know the last few months throughout the winter times arose in certain parts of the city of Havergrace have been pretty bumpy. Um, my office, my email account has received a lot of complaints, uh, about people's front ends being misaligned because of, uh, bad roads and things like that. Uh, I just want you to know, not all roads are ours. I'm kidding, I'm sorry. Well, it's true. I mean, I do have to tell people, usually the worst roads are the ones we don't own. Um, you know, Union Avenue is a state road. Otsego Street is a state road. Revolution's a state road. Um, Superior Street, you know, coming down the hill under the bridge, that's a state road. Um, I, you know, those, those roads are pretty bad. This, you know, um, and there's some city roads, of course, that have been chewed up pretty bad. And, and we try to keep them as pasted as we can, but BGE came to town, which they have the right to do. They're a public utility and they're replacing a lot of new gas lines. Um, and I, I've mentioned this before, that it's been a, and, and Mr. Witty said it tonight. It's a really good relationship we have with Baltimore Gas and Electric. Because a lot of times when they're digging up these trenches to replace gas lines, many times they'll see some of our infrastructure. They'll see some of our pipes or valves that have been in the road since the fifties or seventies. And they'll actually say, uh, just pick up a quick phone call, you know, hey, Tim, uh, you got a valve here that's leaking on the corner of this street and this street, and we can run down and replace that valve in about twenty minutes. That's about five hundred dollars instead of digging up the street when it actually does break. It costs us between five to eight thousand dollars. And so when Mr. Witty says we have a good relationship with Baltimore Gas Electric, that's what we mean. Like, it's, it's not, you know, guys punching the clock and just throwing a bunch of asphalt and crushing run in. It's, it's a good work relationship, which on the other hand, we also let them stage their equipment on city property, which is the Water Street property across from the old Price's Seafood. So it's a good work relationship and also they are very generous with their paving. They really don't have to pave what they dig up, but a lot of times they will pave from curb to the middle of the road. Um, and if the road's really bad, like historically a bad road, we jump in on their contract and pave the other side of the road, which is why I've been, we've been kind of holding our budget paving a little bit because we knew there was going to be a lot of paving coming into spring. If they go across the road, they'll pave the whole road. So it's, it's, it's going to work out. I'm just, basically what I'm saying is it's a good relationship. I apologize to the citizens for the, for the bad road conditions over the winter time. Um, the good news is a lot of parts of our city has received better infrastructure through gas lines. We've repaired a lot of, you know, valves and some pipes that, uh, you know, on their dime, that they, that they dug up the road. And so just ask everybody just have a little more patience. Uh, I know people are going to start getting mad now because now they're going to have all the flag crews back in town because there's going to be massive amount of paving, but the good news is, I like to report, there's going to be a massive amount of paving happening in the city. So it's, on, on the other hand, there's some streets that have really looked, uh, good. Uh, Green Street, uh, Franklin Street's been looking good. So some streets have been completely repaved and we're going to get a lot of paving done between now and probably May. So again, just a little bit of patience and, and it'll work out. And I also know how bad, and I get emails about this all the time. I, I'm very, very aware of how bad the roads are under the railroad bridge at Union and Otsego, where, uh, David Craig Park is and Gene Roberts. Again, it's not the city of Havergrace. I wish we could. We'd get our hands smacked if we tried to pave it. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're on them all the time about paving. And then when you have a winter, the winter time comes and then plows come and they knock up all the patches off. And so I, you know, we're very aware of how bad the roads are and it's a bad reflection upon the city. Uh, it's a bad reflection upon people visiting our city from out of town. They come into this beautiful entranceway, you know, you go under this beautiful historic bridge and you see the water and it's like, you know, all the holes there, and so we're working on that as well. Uh, so we're aware of it, you know, uh, we're trying to get the state to come in and help us out. It'd be nice if they just did a complete mill and repave, but they just come in and patch a lot, you know, just. Maybe we should tell them there's gas lines under there and they should just dig it up, so. Um, I have a message for council. Um, I talked to the council president the other day about this and, and I asked council president, am I going to wait and tell you? And this is for the citizens as well. Historically, or I should say traditionally, the city's operating budget, preliminary budget, which is the job of the mayor's office to produce and then hand to council, uh, is given out the second meeting in March every year. Um, and ever since I've been, you know, when I was on council, under Mayor Doherty, when I've been mayor, that always is the case. We give you the guys the, the budget, the second meeting in March. However, um, I will be giving the preliminary budget out the second meeting in April. Give me a minute to tell you why. Um, there are several bills that have traction in Annapolis, um, that could alter this year's budget, big time. Like, and I'm not talking like one small amendment. I'm talking like, you know, go try to find it kind of, uh, changes to your budget. Uh, there is a, you know, law enforcement body camera, uh, law, House Bill one eighty-seven. Uh, some law enforcement agencies voluntarily have cameras. At the moment, the city of Havergrace does not use body cameras yet. Um, that would cost the city fifty thousand dollars annually to maintain, operate body cameras. Uh, Senate Bill four eighty-six and House Bill five eighty-one, uh, the labor employment standards during emergency, uh, declaration would require three dollars more an hour for any worker who has to work, government worker has to work during a state of emergency. Uh, if they make it retroactive, going back to when COVID started, that would cost the city of Havergrace nine hundred thousand dollars. Almost a million dollars. That's in the pipeline. Could pass, maybe not. Maybe it'd be retroactive, maybe not, so we have to see. Um, there are other bills, uh, once again, this comes up every year. There's, uh, delegates, uh, that want to do away with the emissions and amusement tax. Primarily, we get eighty-eight thousand dollars a year in receipts. That's primarily from Bully Rock Golf Course. If that passes, we'll be eighty-eight thousand dollars short. I'll have to find that in my budget. Um, so those are just a few. And we'll still be in complete compliance with the budget because the charter says as, as long as I give, uh, the council the preliminary budget and we hold a public budget work session prior to the second meeting in May. So you're still getting a month before that, that time period. So I just, a lot of things on the limit right now. If any one of these pass, then the book I give you on the second meeting in March isn't worth the papers printed on it. It, it would have to be completely redone. And then at that point, since it's out, it would all have to be done by amendments. So I would rather, I mean, you know, just hang tight and release the budget if you guys have no objections to that. So maybe you had to talk to anyone about, you know, Mr. DeHordy about the budget or anything, feel free if you want to discuss things. If you want to know what is tentatively being proposed, that's fine. I mean, it's, it's just, remember, when I hand you that budget, it's yours. And so any change that has to come from that then becomes your responsibility. So I'd rather have it taken care of first, if that makes sense. Okay?
Absolutely.
Um, so again, I mean, it's, it's, it's sad that, you know, folks we elect to go down to Annapolis, you have to like hold your breath and pucker up because like you don't know what's, I mean, you shouldn't feel that way. You know, you should actually be proud of the people you send to Annapolis, be like, hey, you're down there fighting for us. And nobody's fighting for us. Actually, the things they're doing are detrimental to us. But I'll tell you this, I've, I've sat in a lot of committee meetings or public hearings where I've had to testify on behalf of the city, usually in opposition to things. And you can tell immediately the people down in Annapolis who served at a local government level and those who didn't. Because the people who served at a local government level asked the right questions. Those who never served any other level, level of government except state, they just think things will magically happen and all the local governments are going to pay for it. And they don't realize this is where the rubber meets the road. This is the, the most services you get, but it's the least amount of money you pay in taxes. It's your roads, it's your water, it's your sewer, it's your first aid responders, it's your sidewalks, your curbs. Snowplow removal, trash removal. You go on. So Annapolis is not doing us any favors. And so hopefully there'll be enough people down in Annapolis who do understand the impact of the hundred fifty-seven municipalities in the state of Maryland. And they'll stop some of these things from happening because some of these things have good intentions, but they have bad consequences. About to come up with nine hundred thousand dollars, where's that come from? It's like six cents on the tax rate. I mean, I can take a knife to the budget, and what funds that going to be? You know, I mean, sorry. We're going to do raise taxes? We'd have to. So, I mean, I'm not trying to be, you know, crass about it, but I think about these things all the time. Every single day I walk in my office and the first thing I say is, any news on this house bill? Any news on this house bill? Because these things are really going to impact us. Now, let's talk about something fun. All right, so as Mr. Seipolt said earlier, the ICE festival is March thirteenth and fourteenth. Uh, I heard it's going to be sunny and seventy-five. Kidding. Nah, I'm, hopefully we'll have like one of those little March, uh, you know, chilly weather days and maybe, you know, fifty degrees, but nah. No matter what, those sculptures, they last all weekend, no matter what the temperature is. They're, they're pretty big. Ever have a block of ice in your cooler? Last forever. Um, so the ICE, man, we're very excited about the ICE festival. It's an all outdoor event. So we feel that, uh, we feel we're ready for it. And also, um, a couple of years ago, we wanted to have a Defender's Day weekend. You know, Defender's Day is a recognition we signed by resolution with the Havergrace Historic Preservation Commission. Um, Defender's Day is May third. It's the day that the British, the anniversary of the British invasion of the city of Havergrace, where John O'Neill defended, uh, the city against the British. So we recognize May third every year, uh, as Defender's Day. And we usually recognize the first weekend in Havergrace as Defender's Day weekend. And so this year, on a Saturday, well, two years ago, we tried to have an event, a festival, and it got rained out. Last year, uh, COVID happened and we were under a lockdown. So this year, uh, I'm just telling you right now to hold the date because we haven't done an event application yet. But so hold the date for Saturday, May first. Uh, we'd like to do something at the, at the Lighthouse Grounds at Concord Point Park, with just some food trucks, maybe some music, some bands, um, just a day to, to be outside in fresh air. Um, if the COVID metrics continue to, to get better like they are, I mean, this is something we believe we can have. It's not an outdoor event, it's an outdoor event. Um, so just save the date, May first. So we're slowly, you know, for the last year, we've been playing defense and now we feel like we can pivot and maybe play a little offense now, maybe try to slowly get back to life. You know, I always feel that the city of Havergrace has tried to navigate these waters, this global pandemic as best as we could. You know, we, we, we never turned our nose at COVID and just kept everything open, but on the other hand, we weren't scared and shut everything down either in Havergrace. We took everything on a case by case basis and we're very pragmatic about everything. Okay, the promenade, what can we do with the promenade? Okay, the park, we can leave the park open. Let's do this. All right, we'll modify this. We'll have to cancel this. So we took everything one at a time. And so, you know, if you're sitting at home thinking, hey, we might be doing too much too fast, maybe right, we're going to watch the numbers. But we're also positioning ourselves in the event, if this downward trend with the COVID numbers continues to go down, then we feel that a, a moderate size event that's completely outdoors in the sunshine, uh, that's optional to attend, would be something perhaps people would look forward to in the month of May, two months from now. So I just want to give everybody, let everyone know that we're actually planning on emerging from this COVID, uh, situation as optimistically as we can and cautiously. Um, COVID numbers continue to trend down. Uh, the city of Havergrace is doing really well. I had the numbers right here. Uh, today we're eight thirty-five, but we were, it's taken us, uh, over a week, we're averaging like one a day. So it's, it's a lot better than, you know, eight a day, ten a day that we had back in the holiday season. So, so Havergrace is, uh, we're in a couple of days without any cases at all. So Havergrace is looking good. Hartford County is averaging twenty-five, maybe thirty a day. So we'll see where we go with this. And, uh, we all know the schools are reopening today. March first, the elementary schools reopen to a partial opening. And, um, and the secondary schools will be opening at twenty-five percent on March fifteenth, if your child is in middle school or high school. And Superintendent Bolson addressed teachers this afternoon in a, in a, in a, on a Zoom chat and said that April seventh, uh, secondary schools will be going back full time. So, um, with the option of parents who still want to keep their kids, virtually they can, but full time meaning four days a week. You can go to, if you want to go to school, you can go to school four days a week, not just one day a week, so. Um, yeah, there's some other stuff that's not that important. I've talked enough. I'm sure the council members have things to say too. But, um, at the next council meeting, it was mentioned, one more thing, women's suffrage, big deal to me. Uh, at the next council meeting, we may have Dr. Amy Rosenkranz, um, uh, in the council to give a presentation on the, uh, Elizabeth Forbes, uh, marker that's going to be dedicated at Tidings Park next to the gazebo. It's a William Pomeroy marker. William Pomeroy is the foundation that makes those big beautiful markers. The Lafayette one that was dedicated in November is a William Pomeroy marker. This one's beautiful. It's actually white with pink outline on it, uh, for women's suffrage. Um, and so I invited Dr. Rosenkranz in here. I, I hope she can make it, uh, to give a presentation and maybe we'll do an unveiling of it before we plan it permanently down at Tidings Park Gazebo. And I know that the, uh, Cultural Arts Center is planning a whole big weekend of informational lectures and movies and things like that to deal with, uh, the centennial of the Women's Suffrage Amendment, which was last year, but we're acting like it's this year, um, COVID. So anyway, thank you very much, everybody, for your time. And I'm going to go to Councilmember Ringzager.
Mr. Mayor, council. Um, March twenty-second, we do have a planning commission meeting, which was previously spoken about by Mr. Grimm. Uh, Mr. Seipolt mentioned daylight savings time's coming up. That's also the day that you change the batteries in your smoke detector. I know I need to take, uh, change mine because that's how I know dinner's ready. So, uh, I do the cooking. I mean, my, that's not my wife, it's me, believe me. Um, a lot of bacon in my house. So, um, I want to thank Mary Ann Lasani very much, Delegate Mary Ann Lasani, for withdrawing House Bill nine one one, which I spoke about last time, the flats, uh, body booting bill. Um, she agreed that there are a few things that were undesirable in there that we wanted to work on and I will be working with her at her convenience, uh, to hopefully come up with an amicable resolution. Um, I spoke with a few different waterfowl and groups about that. A lot of people didn't want the change, uh, but most people I talked to weren't from here. Uh, so I do see the merit in possibly, uh, I advocate for like a small closed season just for body booting, uh, on the flats so we can still preserve the heritage and still allow people to use public land or public waterways out there on the water. And right now, baseball registration is open, baseball and softball. Uh, they're doing it all virtually online now. So you go to havergreyslittleleague.org/registration and you can fill out all the paperwork there. And usually before, when you go in and, uh, register, you'd have to bring all your paperwork and your address stuff. The coaches are going to handle that later. They want you to come in, do the registration now, pay online, do everything else. And they'll also be selling these custom made masks for Havergrace Little League. So, um, if you've got a kid out there who wants to play or if you want to volunteer, havergreyslittleleague.org/registration. And with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Ringzager. Good evening, Councilmember Boyer.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, people in the audience, it's so great to see you. Um, uh, it's great to have people back in the city hall and slowly, little by little, life is getting back to normal again. Um, we will have a straight. life is getting back to normal again. Um, we will have a street and traffic safety, um, committee meeting on the 22nd of March. It'll be a Zoom meeting. You'll be able to get the information from the city website. It'll be from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Um, I am absolutely looking forward to the, um, ICE Festival and absolutely the suffragist and the women's history events that are going on. Um, it's great to, um, uncover history. Amy is finding things left and right. And it's just really exciting to see how things are coming up. And it, it's sorrowful at the same wa, time because, you know, the, the women who were actively, um, involved just, you know, didn't die that long ago, um, in many ways, or their family members or their children. It, it's just, it's sad to see little pieces of the history being lost and all the work she has to do to recover it, um, through grandchildren or great grandchildren. Um, um, and I want to wish everyone a happy St. David's Day on behalf of the 20. I'm sure Carolyn's gonna say a little bit more too. And I counted, it's 19 days till spring. So, thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Boyer. Good evening, Councilmember Zinner.
There we go. Um, so it's great to see folks in the audience again. Uh, I had, um, was trying to update the list on the various commission members and I had written an email to one of the members and asked him to confirm a date that he was, uh, appointed to the commission. And he sent me a picture and the picture was a full dais of everyone, including the directors. No one had masks on. It was, uh, uh, over, obviously over a year ago. And it just looked so different when you, you sit up here today and it's been like this for the past year. So, um, it was almost unrecognizable when you, you just looked to see all these people. It, it seemed so crowded and, and we're so used to this. So it's great starting to come back a little bit. Um, so I appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to mention is, uh, every month is a, is, uh, a month, like February was Black History Month, uh, March is, uh, Women's Month. Uh, the Har, um, Historic Preservation Commission is looking forward to May because that's Historic Preservation Month. And, um, they're working on some, hopefully some plans to, um, highlight our, um, properties that have been awarded, uh, Historic Preservation Awards over the past 20 years and, um, maybe, uh, have a walking tour, uh, advertised so that people can come and just walk past these houses, but obviously let the homeowners know. Um, and then they wouldn't be knocking on the doors to go inside, but just at least, uh, as a courtesy to see if they wanted to be part of that, uh, tour. But that's, uh, that's a little ways off and, and we just started the planning stages. And the Historic Preservation Commission, again, will be meeting via Zoom in, um, the second week of, uh, March, second Tuesday of March. Um, and I think that's all I have for this evening. So I just want to thank everyone and, uh, happy St. David's Day. Um, and, uh, to our friends over in, uh, Mumbles. And I hope they had a, an enjoyable dinner and enjoyed the day. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Zinner. Appreciate it. That's right, it is St. David's Day over in Wales. Right. Good evening, Councilmember Robertson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, city staff, ladies and gentlemen here and at home. A couple of things to put out. First and foremost, I want to thank the, uh, Arts Collective for their, uh, virtual Mardi Gras. Um, it was a great event. The food could not have been better. Uh, the 35 bucks was worth it for just the food alone. Um, so congratulations to them. Way to make, uh, lemonade out of lemons. Uh, next is the Budget and Finance Committee meeting is on for tomorrow at 5:30. Uh, that's March 2nd here, um, in council chambers. Youth Commission will be meeting online March 4th. That's this coming Thursday at 7:00 PM, uh, virtual meeting. Uh, folks can tune into that via YouTube. Um, let's see. Uh, March 13th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM is the American Legion's, uh, St. Patrick's Day Dinner. That is, uh, open to the public event. Tickets are not necessary. Um, you can just come and get your corned beef and cabbage and potatoes and ham and all that good stuff. 14.75 a plate. Uh, again, that's March 13th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at the American Legion in Havittigay. Also taking place at the American Legion in Havittigay on the 6th of March and the 27th of March, from 10:00 to 2 P, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, uh, the American Legion Riders will be collecting black trash bags full of men's, women's, children's used clothes, wallets, ties, socks, backpacks, gloves, blankets, et cetera. Again, March 6th and March 27th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, uh, if you have, you know, some spring cleaning to do, go ahead and get that done between now and March 6th or March 27th and stop by the Legion from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM to drop off those gently used clothing items, uh, blankets, gloves, backpacks, et cetera. What it is is a, uh, it's a fundraiser where we collect the bags, uh, take them to this place to donate them, drop them off. They pay by the pound. So, um, you know, you, you want to get rid of some stuff, bring it to the American Legion. The American Legion, uh, can make some money off your old stuff and you'll be supporting some great causes, uh, at the same time. Mr. Mayor, I believe that is it.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Thank you for comments. Good evening, Councilmember Martin.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, citizens. Jason, you stole all my thunder. That's great. So I will have no comments tonight.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. I mean, Councilmember Martin. All right. Council President Glenn, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, Mr. Mayor, as you said earlier, the students at the elementary school levels started back to in-person learning, uh, two days a week. What a huge step moving forward. Um, as a grandfather that's trying to help his grandson with virtual learning, I could no way replace the value that a teacher brings to the classroom. And the students are undoubtedly going to be the benefactors of going back to school and getting that personalized instruction that's so valuable to them. And I want to personally just take this opportunity to thank all the teachers, to include you, Mr. Mayor, for all you do.
Thanks, EP.
This also opens the door for spring sports. So I gotta tell you, I'm, I'm excited. I can't wait for those magical Warrior Proud moments coming forward, you know, this spring. And last, but certainly not least, I want to say that my thoughts and prayers go out to the Ripken family, um, as Ms. Vi passed away the day before her 83rd birthday. And for those that know Ms. Vi, know she was a charter member of the Harford County Boys and Girls Club. She was their ambassador. Um, she served on their board for like 21 years. And in addition, she was very active, engaged in the Maryland Special Olympics. And I gotta say, going forward, she without a doubt is gonna be sorely missed. So again, my thoughts and prayers go out to the Ripken family. And Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Council President, for your comments. We're gonna move on to item 18, which is comments from citizens. Any citizen in the audience wish to speak on any other non-agenda related item of business for the city? All right. Mr. Seipolt, do we have any submitted requests from citizens?
Uh, just so happens I do, Mayor. I have one.
Okay.
Uh, this comment, uh, is from Mr. Bart Brandon, 150 Giles Street in Havittigay. "Now that the high school has been demolished, I believe that the city should reclaim the 100 block of North Adams Street that was being used as the parking area, uh, at the rear of the school. The street is still shown on the Maryland Real Property Map. It would be helpful to have another north-south through street."
Thank you, Mr. Seipolt. Uh, we'll look into that. Thank you.
I like the idea.
Good, that was a good, that was a good comment. That was a good citizen comment right there.
Thanks, Mr. Brandon.
Yeah, we'll have to see how it, uh, ties into the parking lot there. Mr. Miller, you wanna come up?
Yeah. Hecking odd for...
Yes, sir, Mr. Miller.
Uh, Jim Miller again. In reference to the last comment, I kind of do like amateur history stuff. And Adams Street where the parking lot is was never deeded to the city. That's always been part of that property there. So it's not a city street, never was, unless the city worked out a deal with Harford County to take it back.
Okay. All right. Interesting. Well, yeah, we'll actually, well, I mean, we'll look into it. I mean, it's a head start right there. I appreciate your, uh, historical knowledge there, Mr. Miller. Thank you.
Well, it's helpful.
Yeah.
Help them know where we need to go.
I mean, yeah, it's helpful to know where to start from. Hey, that was, that was a good citizen comment. Thanks, Mr. Bart Brandon. Um, okay. Any comments from the council before we wrap it up? I just want to thank, uh, the citizens. Um, I want to thank, citizens for being in the audience tonight. Uh, you know, we've been doing this since, uh, June or November without, without any citizens. I'm starting to feel like those conspiracy people that think the moon landing was filmed in a studio, but anyway. Um, but thank you very much for being here. I encourage citizen, uh, participation. Come on down. Even though we're socially distanced, we still have room for more people. Uh, with that said, may I have a motion for, yes, sir?
So move.
The, uh, starting of the filing for candidacy tomorrow for the city positions, 8 o'clock. It starts, so it's not a bad idea. If you're interested in running, you can start your filing.
Almost forgot that. Thank you very much, Councilmember Martin. Very good. Thank you. All right. Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Anybody have a second?
Second, second. Forgot we were, we were even in a meeting.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All post a and a. Best to adjourn, carry six year old affirmative. Time is now 8:42. Thank you, everybody.